So, good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to this joint work session between the Calver County Commissioners and the Calver County Plan and Commission on Wednesday, February 21st, 2024, to talk about the draft zoning ordinance. At this time, we'd like to start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion, a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing? None. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I have no public service announcements. Madam Chair?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Buehler, and I am joined this evening by Vice Chair Kernan, Commissioner Gadway, Commissioner Freeland, Commissioner Tui, Commissioner Dr. Holler. If I could also have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tui, who is seconded by Commissioner Gadway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And I guess I forgot to entertain my team as well. Vice President Commissioner Gresso, Commissioner Ireland, and Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Hart cannot be with us tonight. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Department Planning and Zoning if you'd like to start.
Good evening, Commissioners. Rachel O'Shea, zoning planner with Department of Plan and Zoning, and with me is Will Hager, Planner Three. This evening, we have another presentation for you regarding the draft zoning ordinance. So, the staff prepared a draft ordinance to bring the zoning ordinance into compliance with the current comprehensive plan. We made the current draft zoning ordinance available to the public as of May 2023. And since then, we've had joint work sessions as well as public forums. They've been held monthly to review articles of the draft ordinance, and this will continue through May 2024. After tonight's work session, we have three more in March, April, and May. At the link on your screen, you'll have access to all of the associated documents for the zoning ordinance update project, including the draft articles, the draft zoning map, how to submit public comment, and other supplemental materials. And the focus tonight, we'll be discussing Articles 18 and 19, which will be going over uses, the use charts, and accessory structures. And I'm going to turn it over to Will to walk us through Articles 18 and 19.
Thank you, Rachel, and good evening, Commissioners. And before I get into the presentation slides, I just want to start off by saying that unfortunately, we're not going to be able to cover every single proposed revision in these articles because there's simply too much to cover. But like we've been doing for all of the draft articles, we've prepared a document which compares draft articles 18 and 19 with the current zoning ordinance in great detail. So if you're looking for more information, I'd recommend taking a look at that document, which can be found on the zoning ordinance website, zoning ordinance update website, I'm sorry. And so, I'd like to start things off with going over some of the basic symbology of the use tables for those that are unfamiliar. These are tables 18-1, 18-2, and 18-3. If you see a P on the use table, that means that the use is permitted without any conditions in that particular zoning district. The use still needs to abide by all the other regulations of the ordinance, but there are no additional conditions. The C represents permitted with conditions. That means that there are specific conditions that must be met in order for this use to be permitted in that particular district. In Article 18, the conditions for each use, if there are any, are listed underneath the definition of the use. And on the use tables, if you look at the column all the way to the right on the table, you'll see the specific section in the ordinance where you'll find the definition and the conditions for that use. The S on the table means that the use requires special exception, a special exception from the Board of Appeals in order to be permitted. A special exception is another layer of review that gives members of the community an opportunity to provide feedback and to ensure that the proposed development is in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood through a hearing. And sometimes, after feedback from the community has been heard, the Board of Appeals will add conditions specific to the proposed use to ensure that that harmony exists. An SC means that the use requires a special exception from the Board of Appeals, but there are also specific conditions that must be met in order for the use to be permitted. Those are the same conditions listed underneath the definition of the use in Article 18. The SH is, it's a use that requires a special exception in the historic district, and it also includes conditions specific to historic districts. And the S1 means that the use requires a special exception if it's located less than 150 feet from a residential building or active residential building permit, or from an established historic district. And the S2 means that the same, it means the same thing, only the threshold for when a special exception is required is 300 feet. If the space for a use on the use chart is blank, that means that the use is not permitted in that district. And the various uses are grouped into the following sections: agritourism, heritage tourism, and ecotourism, agricultural, residential, commercial, retail, business and personal service, recreation, commercial wholesale, motor vehicle and related uses, industrial, institutional, temporary, and accessory. And on this slide, we have the new zoning districts that have been proposed in this draft, and the types of uses permitted in them. So, in the Rural Neighborhood District or the RND, predominantly residential, agricultural, and institutional uses. In the Waterfront Community District or the WCD, predominantly residential and institutional uses. In the Industrial Mixed Use District or the IMU, industrial, commercial, retail, business, and personal service, and recreational uses. And have Heavy Industrial District or the I2, heavy industrial and commercial wholesale uses.
So, Will, are these all new categories, or are they replacing?
Well, these districts are all new. The use categories have been changed. On this slide, we have listed new uses. These are uses that were added to the draft zoning ordinance. And some of these, we'll take a closer look at later in the presentation, but they include things like amphitheaters, animal shelters, cultural heritage tourism, dormitory, pet grooming establishment, short-term rentals, and solar energy generating systems, both major and minor. And on this slide, I want to go over briefly some of the structural differences between the current zoning ordinance and the draft. So, in the current zoning ordinance, there are eight different use tables, one for uses outside of town centers, and then one for each individual town center. In the draft, there are three use tables, one for uses outside town centers, one for town centers excluding Solomon's, and then one for Solomon's Town Center by itself. In the current zoning ordinance, the conditions for uses outside of town centers and the conditions for town centers are listed in eight different sections in the draft zoning ordinance, conditions for all zoning districts, and town centers are listed in one location. And I think one of the benefits of these changes is, for the first time, you can easily compare how various uses are permitted in the town centers between different town centers and outside town centers, and the conditions. So, that is one of the benefits.
Will, can you explain why Solomon's has its own town center?
I forget the exact number, but I think there are over 20 individual subareas. Do you know the number?
No, it's, I think you are right. But it's just because there are so many sub-districts, it couldn't fit in the same table with the other town centers, so we just decided to section that one out by itself, so that you could see the whole town center in one chart.
So, was no, no thought to trying to condense some of those different zones?
We are going to be looking at, I'm sorry, we are going to be looking at that once we get to do that town center zoning ordinance. Since each town center has its zoning ordinance, once we do the county ordinance, then we're going to be periodically going through each town center. So, once we get to Solomon's, we will take a look at reducing those.
Thank you.
And one thing I wanted to make clear, because we received some comments earlier in the process from people who own agricultural properties that didn't understand why their property wasn't zoned Farm and Forest District, agricultural uses are not just limited to the Farm and Forest District. Every one of these agricultural and agritourism uses on this slide are permitted in the Farm and Forest District, the Rural Community District, the Rural Neighborhood District, and the Residential District. So, I just wanted to make sure that that's clear.
Will, is the density the same in all four of those districts?
No, that's one of the differences between these districts. It is, there are differences between the permitted residential density in the Farm and Forest District, the RCD, the RND, and the RD. But in terms of the uses, we did try to ensure that all of these uses, all of these districts accommodate agricultural uses.
So, all the different uses you have listed on that chart are all uses that are standard in those four districts?
Correct. All those uses are permitted in all of those districts.
So, the only real difference is the density?
So, that would be, I would think, one of the major differences, yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Will. Madam Chair and Vice Counsel, I'm going to be recusing myself for this page of discussion for a possible perceived conflict of interest.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so for the next round of slides, I'd like to focus on some of the specific uses and highlight some of the proposed changes. And the first I'd like to start with are accessory dwellings. Accessory dwellings are permitted in the FFD, the EC, and every rural residential and residential district. The first several conditions listed here are unchanged from the current zoning ordinance. It includes things like only one accessory dwelling is permitted on a lot or parcel, the accessory dwelling must be subordinate to the single-family dwelling, and attached accessory dwelling is limited to no more than 40% of the total gross floor area of the building unless it's located within the basement. It can consist of the entirety of the basement. An owner of the lot or parcel must occupy at least one of the dwelling units on the premises, except for bona fide temporary absences. And in the current zoning ordinance, it cannot, the accessory dwelling cannot exceed 900 square feet gross floor area, and must be within 100 feet of the principal dwelling. In the draft, the accessory dwelling unit cannot exceed 1,200 square feet, and it doesn't have the 100-foot requirement within, within 100 feet of the principal dwelling requirement was not included.
And just for people watching, an accessory dwelling is a separate structure from the main residence?
It doesn't have to be. It can be attached, or it can be in the basement.
Like an in-law apartment?
Yes, it can be attached or detached, and it can be in the basement, or it could be, I think those are probably the three most common.
And currently, you can't have more than 900 square feet?
That is the correct.
Could you increase that to 1,200?
Yes, that is correct.
If we could have Commissioner Gadway come back in.
Okay, next slide. So, outside of town centers, duplexes, triplexes, quadruplexes, and townhomes are only permitted in the residential district in the draft. In the current zoning ordinance, these uses are also permitted in the residential district, but some of the conditions have been revised. So, the following conditions from the current zoning ordinance effective in the residential district were not included in the draft. Permitted, the use is permitted if combined lot area of the attached dwelling development is at least 30,000 square feet. The architecture of the attached dwelling development is such that the building looks like a single-family detached dwelling. In the draft zoning ordinance, attached dwellings are permitted in the residential district, provided that at least 40% of the units on the site are single-family detached dwellings. And in the draft zoning ordinance, all triplex, quadruplex, and townhouse dwellings must be served by sewer.
That's, that's public sewer, Will?
So, moving on to single-family detached. So, the following condition from the current zoning ordinance was not included in the draft. At least 50% of the length of the building shall be 20 feet wide, excluding porches. And that condition was removed to address the trend in tiny homes that we've seen. And the following condition has been added to the draft zoning ordinance. In the FFD, RCD, RND, WCD, and RD, if the lot or parcel does not meet the density requirements as required in this ordinance, a maximum of one single-family dwelling is permitted per lot or parcel of record, provided that the lot or parcel meets the requirements of a buildable lot or parcel in accordance with Section 25-6 of this ordinance. And that condition was written to ensure that, if, say, you have a three-acre parcel in the Rural Community District where the permitted residential density is one dwelling unit per five acres, you can still build a home on that parcel even if it doesn't meet that five-acre density threshold, as long as there's enough buildable area on the parcel, once you factor in setbacks, buffers from sensitive environmental features, et cetera. And in the draft zoning ordinance, this use is not permitted in the I1, RC, MC, and the EC districts, unlike currently. And the reason single-family detached homes are not permitted in these districts in the draft is that there have been conflicts between existing residences and businesses in these districts. So, short-term rental, this is a use that has been added to the draft zoning ordinance. So, the reality is that many short-term rentals are currently operating in the county. We don't know how much. And the, one of the reasons why this has been added to the draft zoning ordinance is that recognizing short-term rentals will allow the county to collect taxes on short-term rentals. In the draft currently, it's permitted in the FFD, RCD, WCD, and the MC. However, in the, in the next draft, that might need to be revised, and we may need to consider permitting short-term rentals in every district that allows for residential dwellings. I'm just not sure if it makes sense to permit short-term rentals in, say, Cove Point, but then not permit them in Drum Point or Chesapeake Ranch Estates. And I was just going to, just one last thing, the last bullet. While no conditions are currently in the draft, conditions will be considered when we start working on the next draft.
Is one of those conditions the definition of a short-term rental?
We do have a definition. So, the definition that we have in the draft currently is a residence or private dwelling that offers sleeping accommodations to the transient public for rent for less than 30 days per client per stay.
Thank you.
Is there anything that protects other homeowners in a neighborhood like Cove Point and the other developments where an individual will be doing a short-term rental in their home? And the people who are renting, they're there for a vacation, and they're partying all hours of the night. And the other people in the neighborhood are going to work the next day or getting their kids off to school. Do we have anything in place that protects the neighborhood?
There's, there's nothing in our, in the draft currently. And like Will said, we're open to considering and incorporating conditions to this, since it's, it's brand-new to us. So, currently, how, you know, when people call us and have those types of questions, a lot of neighborhoods that have homeowners associations, they're protected through the homeowners association. Some, some of them allow them, some of them don't. So, there are offered protections through that. For, for neighborhoods that don't have HOAs, it's a little bit more difficult, but that's how we've seen people be protected so far, since it's not currently regulated through the ordinance.
I think it would be incumbent upon us to have something in our zoning ordinance that does protect the neighborhood with people roaming the neighborhood at 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning. And the reason why I say this is because I've gotten a handful of calls about this, and I have told the constituents that we will be reviewing our zoning ordinance, and that this is the time to make this happen. So, I'd, I'd like to see something in there that protects the neighborhood from people who are there to party all week.
So, is there anything in the ordinance that talks about if someone has a home in a residential neighborhood and all they do is rent it out as a B&amp;B or an Airbnb?
Are, are you describing a scenario where someone perhaps owns a home, but they don't occupy that home, and they're just renting it out?
Mm-hmm.
You know, we do have a condition for another use that goes something like the owner of the lot or the parcel must occupy at least one of the dwelling units on the premises, except for bona fide temporary absences.
But that sounds like it's only addressing if you have multiple dwellings.
Well, yeah, I, I think what that condition is trying to get to is that you need to have an owner on the site, whether it's in, whether they're living in the primary residence or the, or an accessory, but um...
But just to Commissioner Gresso's point, someone could take a home in a residential neighborhood, and let's say they live in Florida, six months out of the year, they could rent it out for six months while they're in Florida. And as long as they transitioned, nobody stayed there longer than 30 days, it's not a, you know, you consider it a temporary rental unit. I think that, that's, some of the concern is that in these neighborhoods, these homes have become rental units, and there's nobody there as a resident, and...
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one thing that we can take a look at, adding as a condition, is that, you know, the, the primary or the owner of the residence must, must be there full-time if, if they're going to be utilizing a portion of the home as, as a rental. That's maybe a protection that would be beneficial.
Especially for the temporary, what we're talking about is temporary rentals, because you have so many people coming in and out. So, I think we need something in place.
Yeah. Yeah, we can take a look at that. The, the one thing that we're caution about with this use and with looking at conditions is that, you know, is it something that can be enforced, or something that we would be able to, you know, look into and see if it's being carried out or not? And with some of these conditions, sometimes that is difficult.
Yes, thank you, Rachel. That's an excellent point. So, moving on, next slide is home occupations. And so, the definition of this use has been revised. And so, the definition now states, "Any activity carried out for gain by a residence as an accessory use in that residence dwelling unit, non-medical offices, home studios, commercial kennels, pet grooming establishments, commercial kitchens, non-farm alcohol production facilities, online retail sales, daycares, and personal service uses are permitted as home occupations. Other uses that are listed separately in the land use charts shall not be permitted as home occupations." And, and so, the change in the definition would mean, the substantive change there is that medical officers would no longer be permitted as home occupations they currently are. And then, the following condition has been added to the draft zoning ordinance. Home daycares are allowed a maximum of 12 clients, and all conditions required for daycare centers shall be met.
And what is that current number now, Will? Do we change, we change it from?
For home daycares?
Yes.
Do we have a, a number currently?
I believe it's 12.
Eight currently?
Do we have any restrictions on parking? If someone does have some, some business in their home, are they required to have certain, a number of parking spaces?
Yeah, there, there is a, a minimum parking requirement. I don't know off the top of my head.
It, it all depends on, when they submit an application for a, for a home occupation, we have three classes, and it depends how the business is going to be run, if they're going to be having clients come to the home or not. If, if they are, parking is something that... If, if they are, parking is something that we take a look at. If, if they're gonna be running a business out of the home where it's only gonna be them who live in the home, you know, it doesn't necessarily require additional parking from what is required for the residence.
Good, thank you.
'Cause, well, 'cause recently, you know, we had an issue with a home business in a neighborhood and there were thirty, twenty-five to thirty cars in the neighborhood every night of the week. So, this'll help address that. Is that your goal?
For a home occupation, we generally ask for some type of business plan so we know how, what is gonna be happening at the home, how the business is gonna be carried out. And so, we, we ask them how many clients during the week or during the day they expect and are they gonna be by appointment and, and questions like that. I, I don't think we've ever looked at one where we thought it would be appropriate to have that number of cars there at any one time. But yes, we're hoping with the additional changes that that will help.
Thank you.
So, moving on to the next slide, non-farm alcohol production facilities. So, in the current zoning ordinance, non-farm alcohol production facilities are not permitted in town centers. In the draft, this use is permitted with conditions in town centers, wherever taverns, bars, or nightclubs are permitted. And if the latter requires a special exception, the former also requires a special exception. And in the draft, the conditions placing specific limits to production, for example, no more than fifteen thousand barrels of beer or five hundred liters of distilled spirits per year, have been replaced with the following. "The facility shall be designed and managed to meet all required state regulations for limits on alcohol production." So, moving on to solar energy generating systems. In the current zoning ordinance, solar energy generating systems are permitted under the broader use category, power generating facility. So, this is the first time that solar is being specifically addressed in the zoning ordinance. In the draft, a major solar energy generating system generates more than two megawatts of electricity and is permitted in the FFD, RCD, IMU, I-1, and I-2. And a minor S, uh, solar energy generating system generates two megawatts or less and is permitted in the same districts as a major, but also in the RND and RD as well. And so, the State Public Service Commission has approval authority for solar projects that generate more than two megawatts of electricity. However, the Public Service Commission is required to take into consideration the zoning ordinance of a local jurisdiction. About a year ago, county staff met with members of the Power Plant Research Program to discuss solar regulations and the Public Service Commission process. The Power, the Power Plant Research Program is a program within the State's Department of Natural Resources. They review major solar energy projects and are part of the Public Service Commission approval process. We also gave them an opportunity to review and comment on our draft solar regulations and we received some feedback from them. In regard to the, the Public Service Commission and approval of major solar energy projects, our understanding is that if a county's zoning regulations are reasonable and don't function as a de facto prohibition on major solar energy projects, the Public Service Commission will usually try to respect a local juris, jurisdiction zoning regulations as much as they can. So, even though the Public Service Commission has the ultimate approval authority, it can still be worthwhile to address major solar energy generating systems in the zoning ordinance.
Hey, Will, is there anything in there about, language in there about the storage capacities of these ma, major and minors?
Off the top of my head, I, I don't think so. But it, it must, if, if there's anything more specific you can say to that?
I know it's just a concern that people have with the storage capacity that these major and minors can, can store. So, I think we should put something in there to, to talk about it and, and regulate that if we can.
Yeah, I think we've had some discussions with the fire departments about, you know, signage or some kind of, so they know.
I, I think we, to be honest, I think we have something like fourteen conditions that we added for major and minor solar energy generating systems. And I believe that there is something in there regarding signage. But I don't recall the specifics off the top of my head.
So, I think that we would ask that you consult with them, because I know they're working on it. 'Cause our concern is we didn't want them rolling up on the seam of a house, not knowing what's in there, because those batteries are very dangerous.
We will, we will contact them and send them the, the sections for them to review. But then we'll, we'll also go back to the, the research program and ask if they have additional suggestions for, for how we could address the storage capacity concern.
So, on the next couple of slides, I will go over a few of the conditions that we did include. So... Yes. So, um, first condition, no solar energy generating system shall be more than twenty feet in height. All structures and uses shall meet a minimum setback of fifty feet from all property lines. A landscape buffer shall be provided between the solar energy generating systems and deciding your property lines, unless the planning commission determines that an alternative buffer is sufficient. A front roadway buffer shall be provided along all public roads in the FFD, RCD, RND, and RD, unless the planning commission determines that an alternative buffer is sufficient. And on those last two conditions, there, these are, those are simplified summaries of those conditions. The actual draft text in Article eighteen goes into much more detail. And two more conditions. "The solar energy generating system shall be constructed and located in a manner to minimize the necessity to remove existing trees upon the parcel and in no event shall forested acreage comprising more than two percent of the gross acreage of the parcel be removed without demonstrating that such removal is necessary for the reasonable construction and efficient performance of the use. And the combined aggregate acreage in the rural legacy areas utilized throughout the county by major and minor solar energy generating systems shall not exceed zero point five percent of the total land area in the lo, in rural legacy areas." And these conditions that we've included for solar projects, we didn't just pull them out of thin air. These are the kind of conditions that other jurisdictions in Maryland are including in their ordinances. And in regard to that last condition, if the county would like to include a condition like that, I'm not sure if zero point five percent is the right number for Calvert County. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but it's a starting point. And moving on to institutional uses. Daycare centers. In the draft zoning ordinance, the following condition applies to all daycare centers. "The use shall have direct road access onto publicly owned and ma, onto a publicly owned and maintained right-of-way. If the use does not have direct access on a publicly owned and maintained right-of-way, special exception approval is required. Special exception approval is granted. The daycare is limited to a maximum of six clients." So, compared with the current requirements, the substantive, substantive change here is limiting the number of clients to a maximum of six if the daycare doesn't have direct access onto a public road, which be, which would be most relevant for in-home daycares.
Will, can you please give us a definition of that, please? Direct access? I mean, is that a limitation on how long the driveway is?
No, it just means that the driveway would, would directly put you out onto a public road, not a private road. It's just a classification for it, that you have that direct access to from your driveway.
Thank you.
And then, one of the uses we wanted to highlight in the temporary section is food trucks. So, in the draft, this use is permitted in every district outside of town centers, with the exception of APDs. In the current zoning ordinance, outside town centers, this use is permitted only in the I-1, RC, MC, and EC. So, that would be a change. And in the draft, the following condition has been revised and now states, "If the food truck is scheduled to be located on the same property for three or more days per week, plot plan showing where the mobile food vending units are located on-site shall be required and submitted with the use permit application."
Is it three days per week for any set period of time, a year, or?
It's, it's any, it's in operation, yeah, if they're gonna start a food truck, if they're gonna be in, in one location for that amount of time.
For just one week?
So, for example, that would include the Calver County Fair?
If, if, well, it's not for, if it's for a, one event, we don't count that, even if the event is multiple days. If it's for an event, then, but for an ongoing, they're gonna be ongoing three days a week that are required.
Is that the first thing I thought of when I read that? Is that a bunch of people with food trucks going to the fair would have to jump through more hoops? That's your only, the only question I have. Thank you.
So, you're trying to get at if someone, we see parking lots of businesses where they allow food trucks to set up in their parking lots?
Right, yes, that's mainly what we're looking at, is for food trucks that set up in a permanent location, they're there multiple days a week. We want to make sure that they're not in the way for safety reasons, traffic flow, things like that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Article nineteen, accessory structures. And so, the following are the most basic regulations addressing accessory structures generally. So, a building permit is required for the construction of an accessory structure greater than, greater than a hundred and fifty square feet in size and is required for all, all structures within the critical area. And detached accessory structures, less than five hundred square feet, when the principal use is residential or agricultural, have a side and rear setback of five feet, unless otherwise specifically permitted or restricted, restricted by Article nineteen. And if a detached accessory structure is greater than five hundred square feet, it must meet the setback requirements of a primary structure, unless otherwise specifically permitted or restricted by Article nineteen.
In the current regulations, is the requirement for a building permit a hundred and fifty square feet? I thought it was a hundred.
It's a, unless it's in the critical area where the size isn't a factor. Outside of the critical area, it's a hundred and fifty is a threshold where you need a building permit.
It's still not very big. Any thought to increase in that?
Well, the thought just entered my head, but, uh... But I don't think that's something that we had discussed up to this point.
I'm glad I could have that alone.
Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. It's consistent with the building code. That's why it's a hundred and fifty. The building code requires any, any structure over a hundred and fifty square feet to have a permit.
And who sets the building code?
The adopted building code. The ca, the commissioners do, so you would have to change that as well.
Bingo. You know, we've had this discussion before. A dog pen is a hundred and fifty square feet and it's, it's a joke that I have to get a building permit to build a dog pen that's a hundred and fifty square feet.
Or a chicken coop.
Or a chicken coop. I seriously think we should look at raising the minimum. It's just, it's nothing, you know, a hundred and fifty square feet is nothing. There are bathrooms in houses now bigger than a hundred and fifty square feet. You know, people shouldn't have to come and get a building permit, you know. I would ask that you at least look at trying to raise that minimum.
And do you have a minimum?
I do not have. I would take suggestions.
Okay, we could compare other counties in Maryland.
Yeah, if we take a peek and see what everybody else does.
Okay.
If we're consistent with everybody else, then, you know, that's sort of what the standard is. It just seems pretty small, but...
Thank you.
So, accessory structures would be like a shed, a single-car garage, maybe, in addition to what you have, that type of structure.
Correct.
Okay.
And so, in terms of provisions addressing accessory structures generally, the following have been added to the draft zoning ordinance. Certain accessory structures may also be prohibited in front yards, with the exception of flag lots, which are exempt from these prohibi, provisions. "If more than one zoning district is located on a property, all accessory structures and uses shall be located within the same zoning district as the principal use to which it is accessory. And no accessory structure shall be constructed prior to the construction of the primary structure to which it's accessory. This does not apply to agricultural uses." And there have been some revisions made to the conditions for chickens and livestock kept on non-farm properties. So, these are conditions that would apply to parcels, to lots of parcels, and properties that don't meet the definition of a farm property. So, the following condition has been revised and now states, "The keeping of poultry is permitted on properties of one acre or more in size. A special exception from the Board of Appeals is required on properties less than one acre in size." The following condition has been revised in the draft and now states, "A minimum lot or parcel size of two acres is required to keep livestock." And these conditions replace the following condition from the current zoning ordinance. "If the size of the parcel is less than three acres, a special exception from the Board of Appeals is required." And these conditions were revised in part to address the frequency of these types of conditions, of these types of special expect, excuse me, special exception cases being brought to the Board of Appeals in order to free up space on the Board of Appeals' agenda for other types of development.
So, I'm sorry, Will, I didn't know if you were done. Can you go back for a second? So, in the first bullet point, you talk about poultry. And then, below that, you talk about livestock. So, you are talking about two different types of animals.
Yeah, currently, they're both grouped together. In the draft, they've been separated.
To spread them out, if that makes sense. Thank you.
So, in the draft as well, in the case of chickens, some additional con, uh, conditions were included in the draft. And, you know, to be honest, we were uncertain, for various reasons, whether additional conditions should be included here, which is one of the reasons why we did include them in the draft in order to receive feedback from the public, which we did receive. But I just want to make sure that we're on, all on the same page here. The properties that additional conditions would apply to would be non-farm properties that are less than three acres in size. The properties that would have been required to get special exception approval from the Board of Appeals under the current regulations. I don't think anyone is interested in regulating the number of chickens on properties over three acres in size where the Board of Appeals' approval for chickens isn't currently required. But for those non-farm properties, less than three acres in size, that would be required to get a special exception approval, to have chickens under the current requirements and where the Board of Appeals can impose conditions on those properties as they see fit, these are some of the kind of conditions that the county might consider including. So, things like coops are permitted in the rear and side yard only and shall be setback a minimum of twenty-five feet from a lot line or parcel line. Up to a minimum, a maximum of eight poultry may be kept. Roosters, peacocks, and guinea fowl are prohibited.
Excuse me, why are they prohibited?
Which one?
Roosters, peacocks, and guinea fowl?
They're allowed.
Yeah. Roosters, I think we all know are allowed. I've heard that guinea fowl are very loud, I, so I think that...
Because of the noise?
So, if the sex of a chick cannot be determined at hatching, a chick of either sex may be kept on the property for up to six months. All coop shall be designed to ensure the health and the well-being of the animals, including protection from predators, the elements, and inclement weather. And slaughtering of poultry on-site is prohibited.
Will, I'm gonna take a minute on this, if you don't mind, please, sir?
Go ahead.
Um, I'm glad to see on one of the previous slides that you talked about rezoning something to allow for more animal shelters. Because I'm gonna be curious what Linda Kelly Animal Shelter is gonna do with a whole bunch of roosters that need a place to live. Because the person can't slaughter them on the property, they can't get rid of them, but you say they can't keep them, so they're gonna have to give them to the animal shelter. So, food for thought on that. Makes no sense to me, but I, I get where you're going as far as the noise. Eight, if you got eight hens, I, I'm curious where that number came from. Is it why not nine, why not ten, why not three? Where was the basis for the eight?
So, Rachel might have some more information on this. I, I know that from my experience working with the Board of Appeals a while ago, that was a condition that was not infrequent that they would impose on, on properties that, on cases that they would see. And eight was a typical number that they would use. I'm, I'm not sure if that's where the number came from, but do you have anything?
Yeah, we, I mean, we took a look at, since a lot of these go through Board of Appeals, we took a look at a lot of the cases. And the conditions that the Board of Appeals would put on these cases, we, we pulled those that they used frequently, and that's what we incorporated here.
All right. Are you gonna, just out of curiosity, on the next zoning... Are you gonna, just out of curiosity, on the next zoning round, are you gonna come out and you can say, "I can't clean fish on my property next"? Is if I'm raising a food product, or I have a food product, whether it be a deer, that we legally go out and hunt and then slaughter that deer on the property that happens to be two and a half acres? Where is the line gonna be drawn on whether or not you can provide food for your family through?
I don't think that is our intention. And again, like Will said, we're open to keeping these conditions, we're open to keeping some of them, or getting rid of all of them, it's all up to what the county wants. All we did was, you know, we reduced the acreage requirement for what would have to go to Board of Appeals to be able to keep chickens. So for the ones that fell in between from the current ordinance, we took a look at the conditions that were on, put on those cases for those people to have chickens, and that's what we put in the proposal. But this is not set in stone, it can be changed or adjusted.
So why are we focusing on poultry? Somebody could potentially have a rabbit hutch on their property and legally be able to slaughter a rabbit, but not slaughter a chicken?
Yeah, and a point that Rachel made earlier about the enforceability of some of these proposed, these are just proposed conditions that, you know, we can consider, but, you know, one question to keep in mind when you're considering them is how realistically enforceable are a lot of these conditions going to be? And to your other point that you're making, you know, it can be interesting, you know, how we as a society decide where we draw the line in terms of, you know, what's something that, you know, some individual might find it to be a nuisance. We regulate that in terms of chickens. I mean, again, just my personal experience, I live in a small lot neighborhood, my neighbor has chickens. I've also got a, we also have a hound dog. Now, if I had to choose to live next to a neighbor with chickens, or choose next to a neighbor with a hound dog, I'm taking the chickens every day of the week. But.
Because you can eat the chickens.
But we, but we as a society have decided that, you know, chickens are something that we take a closer look at in terms of regulations versus hound dogs. So it's, so yeah, these are all things that we consider and should be considered.
And I think the only reason why, you know, they're specifically called out here and we put them in the presentation is because it comes up a lot. We get calls about chickens all the time, from people that want chickens to people that don't like chickens, and they're upset that their neighbor has them. So we get calls going both ways, all the time, and some of the reasons that we're trying to make some changes here is because our BOA agendas get taken up with chicken cases. So it's just what comes up most often, they're the most popular, and it's what we deal with on a regular basis, which is why I think so much attention is being drawn to it.
Does the Maryland Department of Agriculture regulate backyard flocks? Is there a requirement to register?
Yes. Yes, there is a requirement to register, but there's no, that I know of, slaughtering requirements or restrictions. But they do ask to register, and that's because of, in the cases of avian influenza, they know where those flocks are and how they can track those issues.
Yeah, and Charles County is reporting their first positive flock for H1N1.
But to support the other commissioners, I would consider removing the slaughtering provision you have in there, because if people are raising chickens for their own consumption, where are they gonna slaughter them? If you don't allow them to do it at home? And we're not talking about commercial, where they're, you know, you're only allowing them to have so many. If they're doing it for their own use, as I said, where are they gonna do it if you don't allow them to do it at home? We're still Calvert County, I think.
When I first looked at this, I had to double-check the upper right-hand corner of the page, because I thought this was something that got copied and pasted from a county north of us, way up in front of D, you know, north of DC or something.
And we did, we did receive so many comments on this, and mainly for the support of small farms, but people are very passionate about being in Calvert County with a rural lifestyle. And, and we have to take the comments into consideration, and that should be what guides us.
Most definitely. And I think some of the comments received there, again, as Will tried to explain, you know, when he started reviewing the chickens, is that it was kind of a misconception of what this pertains to and what it doesn't.
And some you, some you could tell it was more pertaining to farms, small farms, but then some were just people who are enjoying the rural lifestyle and want to be able to have the freedom to do that and not be regulated. We live where there used to be a tobacco farm, and everybody's on acreage, and the neighbor down the street had a rooster and had chickens and all. And, you know, quite frankly, I moved here for the freedoms that I have in Calvert County, and that was their right to do that, and if I want to get one, I want to be able to get a rooster and chickens as well, although I'm terrified of birds. I am, it'll never happen, but it's my right if I wasn't scared.
I just like that they help with the insect issue.
They do, and somebody told me the guinea fowl does that. You know, they're, they're great, so I would be, I wouldn't want to run into a rooster or peacock, but I think if people want them, they should have them.
How many complaints a year do we actually deal with, do you know, offhand, Mary Beth?
I don't know if I could give you a number, but it's on the regular.
Weekly, one a week?
Is it neighbors that don't like the noise, mostly?
And the smells.
You get used to the smell.
Anybody that buys or rents a property in Southern Maryland has to sign a document from the Association of Realtors that says they are moving into a farm, farming area. And with that farming area comes farm smells and farm noises and farm looks. It says it right there on the form, they sign that document before they buy a house or before they rent a property in all the tri-county area, even if it's in downtown Prince Frederick or Lexington Park. We tell people, "You're not gonna have to worry about chickens, but you're gonna have to worry about jet noises down in Lexington Park." They don't have a jet noise form yet, but it's probably coming soon.
Well, after reading through the comments, it appeared that a lot of people who already have chickens are upset about these new restrictions against their freedoms to have chicken. But does this affect anyone that actually already has chickens, or does this just expand the pool of people who can have chickens?
So yeah, I think that there was a misconception on the scope of what, where these conditions would be applied to, and again, this is, you know, these are conditions that were put in the draft because we wanted to get feedback, you know? So it doesn't necessarily mean that these are conditions that, you know, everyone in planning and zoning agrees with. But in terms of, in terms of where these conditions would be applied, it's specifically those properties that, under the current requirements, so they have a non-farm property, it's less than three acres, under the current requirements, they would have to go to Board of Appeals in order to get approval, and the Board of Appeals can impose conditions on their properties as part of that approval. That would be the limitation for where, of what we're talking about here.
Okay, so we're not increasing a restriction on anyone?
We're not saying that anybody that has chickens is then not, with the approval of this draft, is then not gonna be able to have chickens.
Right.
But they would be limited to the use, correct?
Only, for this set, it would only be for that in between an acreage from one or eight.
So somebody with 2.9 acres, if they have 10 chickens now, and they have a rooster so they can raise new chicks and incubate the eggs, and they slaughter some for food to offset food prices now, they would be eliminated out of this, and it would have to go down to eight. They couldn't slaughter them and have to give up their rooster.
Right, but again, we can take these, we can take these conditions out.
Yeah, and.
Or we change them, however you would like.
Well, and I think what your example there, I think, gets to the difficulty in terms of the enforceability of these conditions.
We gotta get the chicken enforced. Why make it a rule? That's, that's my thought.
And, you know, like, like we've been saying, maybe we take just about all of these conditions out, but we can at least say we had the discussion.
Can I answer your question, Commissioner Gable?
Yes, please.
We would not go back, I'm sorry, I'm Judy Makel, zoning deputy director. We would not go back to anyone who has already been approved to have chickens, to say, "We don't have the personnel who could do that anyway," but we would not go back to those and apply these conditions. They have already been approved. They've gone to Board of Appeals, they have a farm, we would not go back to those. This would be for the new citis, new customers who say they want chickens.
And Ms. Makel, I'm not, I honestly try not to be devil's advocate here, but I will, I would be almost certain that there's somebody in the county that would have to give up chickens that currently have them right now, but never came down to the county and spent whatever dollars or spent time to apply for the permit.
So they illegally have them.
So if that's the case, then they would, at this point, not have a permit.
We're probably getting complaints about them now, anyway, so we'll have to address that as it comes. We give them the opportunity when we get those calls to correct the issue.
But Ms. Makel, I would disagree. If you put in the regs that you can't have a rooster, and I have a rooster today, and my neighbors complain, you're gonna come and make me get rid of my rooster, because the regs say I can't have roosters. It doesn't say only people from today moving on that get chickens. The reg says you can't have a rooster.
Ultimately, this is approved by you all, so if you take it out, we won't be able to take a rooster, so.
Just pointing out.
We saw the comments, and I saw it was extremely weighted, one-sided, I would be in favor of pretty much removing everything in that.
I think staff is competent enough to take the comments they've heard tonight and make some changes.
Yeah.
You have heard a rooster, right?
Yes, I have.
Oh, I'd like to ask your neighbor if they've heard a rooster.
Any other thoughts on, before we move forward? Okay, just one last slide before we get to the summary. We also added conditions for accessory solar generating systems. So the following conditions have been added. These are for accessory solar energy generating systems, just emphasizing that. Tight restrictions for roof-mounted systems, 18 inches on pitched roofs, six feet on flat roofed buildings, up to 40 feet in height, 15 feet on flat roofed buildings over 40 feet in height. Wall-mounted solar energy generating systems may project up to four feet from a building wall and shall be integrated into the structure as an architectural feature. And freestanding system is prohibited in the front yard, limited to a maximum of 20 feet in height, and not permitted in designated open space. So in summary, you have use tables for town centers that have been consolidated and conditions now located in one place. New zoning districts and several new uses have been added. Revisions to conditions for some residential uses. Revisions to conditions for in-home daycares and daycare centers. Non-farm alcohol production facilities permitted in town centers. Major, minor, and accessory solar energy generating systems included in the draft, and revised minimum acreage requirements for chickens and livestock and more conditions included. And for more details, please see the document comparing draft articles 18 and 19 with the current zoning ordinance. And so I believe at this time, staff requests the planning commissioner and board of county commissioners to discuss draft articles 18 and 19, and direct staff regarding any recommended considerations or options to include in the draft for public input.
I think we've been doing that as we went along, but if somebody has something that they missed, now's your opportunity. Good, good, we're good on our end.
I'm good.
Do I think we're good too?
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you guys did a great job.
Public comment?
Yes, sir. The board adopted a resolution in 1989 intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. A copy is found here to my right by Resolution 51-20. Persons are welcome to address the Board of Commissioners on any matter germane to the business of county government. Persons addressing the Board shall refrain from statements, remarks, or conduct that is uncivil, rude, vulgar, profane, or otherwise disruptive to the conduct of the Board's business. All speakers must identify themselves, whether speaking as an individual where you are allotted two minutes, or as an appointed spokesperson of a group where you are allotted five minutes. For those attending virtually, if you wish to speak, please press star nine or use the raise your hand function. The Ethics Commission has asked that we remind speakers at public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy, and lobbyists must register in advance.
There is nobody in here at this time.
If there is no more, then we can move to the next agenda item.
So at this time, I don't think that we have any further business. As far as the Board of County Commissioners, I didn't obtain a motion to adjourn air portion.
Madam Chair?
I motion a second that we adjourn. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Madam Chair?
Thank you. If I could have a motion to take a brief recess, and we will return for our regular meeting?
So moved?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn, recess.